I'd like to begin this meeting of Bethlehem City Council for Tuesday, March 15. Will everyone please stand for the application be given by Father Kevin Hobson of Holy Baptist Church. Remain standing for the pledge to the flag, please.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together this evening. We ask that you look upon all of our needs and send your blessing upon our meeting and our discussions for the good of our community. We're also mindful of the needs of those outside our community, most especially these days for the people of Japan. We pray for them, for that their needs be met, that they be protected from further harm. We place these in all of our needs before you as we pray in the words of today's Gospel reading, the Lord's Prayer. I invite anyone who wishes to join me in praying. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy keepers come, thy will be done. Honor it as is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Mr. De Jacinto.
Present.
Ms. Dolan. Mr. Evans.
Present.
Mr. Mauer. Mr. Reynolds.
Present.
Mr. Donches.
Present. We have a citation honoring Robert L. Mitchell, who's in the audience with his family. I ask him to come forward, please. Whereas Robert Mitchell has, for the past 22 years, served as citizens of Bethlehem Police Department, and whereas this individual was sergeant in the department as a police officer in 1989, in 2004 was promoted to sergeant detective, and in 2009 was promoted to lieutenant, is known for his commitment to the job, having assisted thousands of Bethlehem residents by providing effective, efficient, and responsive service. Whereas during his years of service, he gained the respect and trust of the officers with whom he worked, and that of the people of Bethlehem who came and know him. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem that Robert L. Mitchell, be extended the gratitude of his city which is mindful of his 22 years of service, for the special contribution he has made to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Bethlehem, and be it further resolved, now that Bob is retired from the police department, he will be able to relax and enjoy life, and be it further resolved that Bob Miss White Flar, be extended every good wish for long and satisfying retirement. Bob, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to item four, approval of minutes. Any comments? This is approved. Item five, courtesy of the floor for public comment on ordinance resolution to be voted on by the city council this evening, five minutes time limit. Would anyone like to address council on an issue we will be voting on this evening? We'll move into the agenda. All business, members of council, all business. We'll move to reports. Mr. Mayor.
I have one. Administrative order number 1347, hereby appoint Nick Nicola, I hope I pronounced that right, 545 Pine Top Trail, Bethlehem, to the Fine Arts Commission, and this appointment is effective until February 2012.
And the resolution to confirm this arts right Eric Evans and David De Jacinto.
Comments? Please call the rolls.
Mrs. Polinski.
Aye.
Mr. De Jacinto.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Donches.
Aye.
That's it, thank you. Committee reports, Mr. Evans, Parks and Public Property.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Parks and Public Property Committee met yesterday, or last night, Monday, March 14, 2011, at 6:00 PM in Town Hall. The committee considered the following, Monocacy Number Four Hardball Field, request for dugouts. The dugout design will be further reviewed and defined by the Parks and Public Property Department. Since there is no use permit agreement, no committee action was required. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, Finance Committee report slash Public Works Committee.
The Finance Committee met jointly with the Public Works Committee on Monday, March 14, at 7:00 PM in Town Hall. The Finance Committee jointly with Public Works Committee considered the following, providing water service for East Allen Township. The committees unanimously recommended that city council adopt a resolution authorizing the non-binding term sheet. The Finance Committee considered the following, transfer of funds, general fund prior encumbrances, transfer of funds, general fund temporary help, amending the general fund budget, JAG accounts, amending nonutility capital budget, DCD, Main Streetscape improvement. Finance Committee unanimously recommended that city council adopt appropriate ordinances and resolutions. Enterprise Zone program. Finance Committee received a presentation on the Enterprise Zone program in 521 East Fourth Street. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item 11, Resolutions, 11A, authorizing application for RCAP and cooperation agreement, Arts Quest Festival Center at Steelstocks.
Whereas the city at the request of Arts Quest is desired to obtain funds from the redevelopment assistance capital program of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in the amount of $2 million for the purpose of assisting Arts Quest in the construction of the festival center at Steelstocks. Whereas the city considers that the construction of the festival center will re-fund the South Bethlehem Enterprise Zone area, assist in reducing unemployment, and provide economic benefits to the city, North Hampton County, the Lehigh Valley region, and strengthen the educational and cultural programs of the city, county, and region. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem that the mayor be authorized to execute all application forms for the $2 million grant which will be passed through the city to Arts Quest for the purpose of constructing the festival center at Steelstocks, and be it further resolved that they are controlled or authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement. Be it further resolved that the city has been assured by Arts Quest that it will assume the full local share of the project costs and responsibility for the project's ongoing operating and maintenance costs. Resolution 11A is sponsored by the residents of David De Jacinto.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Polinski.
Aye.
Mr. De Jacinto.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Donches.
Aye.
11B, authorizing approval of term sheet, East Allen Township Order Service.
Whereas the Bethlehem Authority, the city, the township of East Allen, and the East Allen Township Municipal Authority desire to enter into a non-binding term sheet for the expansion of the city's Public Utility Commission service territory and the acquisition of the assets of the East Allen Township Municipal Authority. Whereas the term sheet provides for the township to support the application of the city to expand its service district for public order in the Public Utility Commission, with the Public Utility Commission. Whereas the term sheet provides for the authority and the city to acquire all the assets, accounts, permits, and customers of the East Allen Township Municipal Authority, and to assume the existing financial obligations of the East Allen Township Municipal Authority. Whereas the term sheet wishes that the parties will enter into an intergovernmental cooperation and purchase and sale agreement. Whereas the authority desires to obtain the approval of city council to move forward with the negotiation of the intergovernmental cooperation and purchase and sale agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem that the non-binding term sheet is approved, and the city and authority are encouraged to move forward with negotiations expressly conditioned upon the council of the city of Bethlehem adopting an ordinance approving the execution of the intergovernmental cooperation and purchase and sale agreement. Resolution 11B is sponsored by David De Jacinto and Eric Evans.
Comments? Can you just?
This is a question I forgot to ask yesterday, Mr. President, the Finance Committee.
Go ahead.
And I'll ask you, or you can direct it out there, but when is the expected closing of this? When are we expecting to get this?
Mr. Reifler, or Mr. Repash? A day, I'm sorry.
Depend, really. We plan on submitting the application for acquisition to PUC probably sometime towards the end of April. Conceivably it could be a three-month to perhaps six-month process without contest. If it's contested by any party, that could change the game. So it becomes a little bit uncertain at that point.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Polinski, you want to make a comment on what you just, for the record, regarding this resolution?
I reviewed this, and I guess council should be aware that it has to come back, obviously, to council for an ordinance on the final promo.
Mr. Reynolds?
Just to repeat some of the comments I made yesterday at the Finance Committee, is that I think that there is, this is certainly a good deal for the city. And I know yesterday I had said, I told Mr. Repash and Mr. Brong that I thought they deserved, they deserved praise for going out and getting this kind of thing done. It looks like it's a win-win situation for everyone involved, except for maybe the other people that were trying to sell water, or you know, try to get control of this. But I think one thing that we've talked consistently in here is about finding new, new potential revenue streams. And while this is not, this certainly doesn't, it's not millions and millions and millions of dollars, it is, it is something. And I think right now, as I said yesterday, it certainly, as we've heard, it's tough to go through these things. It's tough with PUC regulations. We have great water, we have great product, we have a great product, but it's not as easy as it probably should be to go out and find new customers. So once again, I think that you deserve, you deserve, you deserve praise for going out, and I know this, I know this deal is, this deal has been a long time, a long time in the works. So once again, I just want to say that I think it's a good thing for the city in going forward, and so it's the kind of thing that we like to hear. Thanks.
Any comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Polinski.
Aye.
Mr. De Jacinto.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Donches.
Aye.
Chair will accept the motion of Mr. De Jacinto, and seconded by Mr. Evans, to consider Resolution 11C to 11F. As a group, I ask the court to call the roll of a motion, and to read the resolution, please.
Mrs. Polinski.
Aye.
Mr. De Jacinto.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Donches.
Aye.
All our certificates of appropriateness. 11C, a proposal to install new signage in the same location with lettering on storefront window adding to the website and phone number, and a 27 by 27 inch hanging sign to be installed on the existing blade roof of the storefront at 530 Main Street. 11D, to add a second floor and gable roof to the rear single-story addition at 241 East Market Street. 11E, to construct a new entrance with roof to access the basement laundry room at 253 East Market Street. 11F, to change the signage codes and materials of the Lemster Building at 524 North New Street. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Bethlehem that certificates of appropriateness are granted for the proposals. The resolutions are sponsored by Eric Evans and David De Jacinto.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Polinski.
Aye.
Mr. De Jacinto.
Aye.
Mr. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Mr. Donches.
Aye.
11G, discharge of police officer Michael Leonard.
Whereas Michael Leonard is a police officer of the city of Bethlehem, whereas Bethlehem City Council was advised via communication by the city solicitor dated September 17, 2010, as to the misconduct and discipline of Officer Michael Leonard recommending termination. Whereas the Pennsylvania statute in 53, section 39408, states that all employees subject to civil service shall be subject to suspension by the director of the department for misconduct or violation of any law of the Commonwealth, any ordinance of the city, or regulation of the department pending action by the city council upon the charges made against any of such employees. On hearing before the city council, where they may be represented by council, they may be fined or suspended for a period not exceeding 30 days with or without pay, or they may be discharged by city council if found guilty of the charges made against them. Whereas pursuant to proper public notice, city council held public hearings on December 8, 2010, and January 24, 2011. Whereas Michael Leonard was represented before Bethlehem City Council by Philip Lauer Esquire, and the city was represented by city solicitor John Exberg Jr., Esquire. Whereas upon consideration of the testimony and exhibits as submitted to Bethlehem City Council at the aforementioned public hearings, the openings, arguments, and submissions of council, be it resolved by city council as follows, and the findings of fact and conclusions are listed in the resolution. Bethlehem City Council specifically finds that Officer Michael Leonard violated the departmental policies of the SOPs as stated in the resolution, and general order and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. For all the foregoing reasons, Officer Michael Leonard is found guilty of the charges as lodged, and the punishment of termination is approved effective June 8, 2010, pursuant to 53 of the Pennsylvania statute, section 39408, sponsored by David De Jacinto and Eric Evans.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Is this something?
I'm sorry.
Pardon?
Mrs. Polinski.
Correct. Thank you. New business, members of council, any committee meetings?
And new business, members of council, any new business? If not, we will move the courtesy of the floor for public comment, five minutes on any issue. Mr. Gallin?
Yes, thank you.
Send my phone, please. Thank you.
My name's R. Terry Galli. I'm a lifelong resident of Bethlehem. Except for a couple of years, I was in the army during Vietnam.
Could we just have your address for the record, please?
702 Prospect Avenue on the west side, 1881 zip. Yeah, I lived on the west side my entire life, except the time in the service. I'm a recently retired teacher from the Bethlehem area school district, 36 years, and have invested interest in the city, and know a few people involved with the council over the years. And I want to speak to one ordinance in particular, I believe it's 941 Point Six, it's a dog ordinance. And I want to preface this by saying that I like dogs, I own dogs. I had four sons, and they had dogs off and on during the course of their lives, although four boys was enough without the dogs. But what I'm, what I'm speaking to is this, my wife and I both have recovered from back surgery. We take walks down at Nature Trail, Monocacy Park, and also on the towpath. And then the ordinance, 941, for Monocacy Park, states, there's a list of rules as you walk into the park. Rule number one is no, literate two is no dogs allowed, and that is the ordinance for the Nature Trail section, which we walk from generally Alex Mill down to Burnside, that section there, down with the old paint mill, and also down further at times, too. I fish as well, too. I fly fish, and I'm in that stretch a lot. Since I retired, I get there more. And in the last couple of years, I've noticed increasingly, I've had, and that's not just myself, I've had with relatives, friends that I fish with, strangers that I've seen who've made comments to me, there's been an increase in the amount of dog activity down there. And not just leashed dogs, but unleashed dogs in particular. I'm the type of person that, you know, can take pretty much, and when I do confront someone, it's always diplomatically and politely, and I never confront and don't look for confrontations. But I've been involved in a few situations where a dog, you know, came up to me, almost knocked me in the creek, you know, and I, if I fall backwards, I could possibly be paralyzed because of neck issues that I have with my spine. And I'm wary of it. I've had issues in the past with things, but I don't want to get into all that. I did end up having an incident twice where I was almost knocked over by a dog. And again, it's not the dog, it's the owner not having it leached, in an area where really no dog's allowed. And I've mentioned the various people, Dog Park's up there, People Park is down here. And, you know, right up the hill by the memorial is the Dog Park, and many people do use it. Generally, the dog is leashed and under control. I don't say anything, you know, if the person has the dog under control, I'm not going to go running to the police or anything, I'm not like that. But yeah, this one time I was, I was basically attacked, and my grandchildren were with me, they would have fallen free. And it was kind of that's it kind of thing. And I got a license number and ended up in front of a district judge, and the woman was fine. But I don't want to go through that. But I've noticed that I said increased activity down there, mainly of unleashed dogs. You know, I had a dog run up to me, and, "Where's your owner?" You know, I didn't know if the dog was going to bite me, lick me, whatever, and the owner, a minute later, comes walking up the path, and's like, "Man, please leash your dog." And I, sometimes they will, sometimes, that, that particular woman was the one, she told me I had a problem, didn't, shouldn't come there. It's like, "Oh, that's wrong here." And that's the one that I, you don't tell me that. I've been coming there since 1953 with my dad. But anyway, that's, that's the issue, what I think, I'm not going to solve anything, but the sign that is, that you look at with the rules as you come in, right on, it's on one side of the nature path as you enter. On the other side is a bigger sign that says no motorized vehicles, clearly visible. And people have said that, "I didn't see a sign." And if you look, it's there. It is smaller. I would really think a bigger sign, maybe another one underneath that blue sign that says no motorized vehicles, same size. That way people can't say, "I didn't see it." It's, you know, properly posted, it's there. The other spot that I thought a sign of that nature could be is down at the towpath, where the music fest site used to be. I don't, cut me if you have to, I might not probably over. But the, I'm almost done. Right where the main stage was on the towpath, this parking area there, and that's not as bad a situation, but dogs are allowed down there if they're leashed, and under control. And maybe a sign there as well, too, stating that. There was one there before, but it's fading, you can't see it. So I guess I'm asking for two signs, is what I'm doing. If possible, I, I used to work for a city bank, high school, college, I used to do, I put signs in.
I'm going to ask Mr. Karp and Deputy Police Commissioner Shifker to look into it. I think maybe we could look at the signs issue.
It would, as I said, I'm not the only one, I wouldn't, and if fishing season coming up, their dogs would just jump in the water.
Thank you.
Throw it in the water, and, you know, it's this type of thing I think we need to address.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Mr. Fennig?
830 Linden Street, first item on my list, is I want to thank Bob Donches for writing a memo regarding mercantile tax to the administration, and I'm looking anxiously forward to their reply. I think it's especially important since we now have an announcement that the Main Street merchants are going to put up little vendor booths at Christmas time, so that's more vendors subject to the mercantile tax. Next item, on February 28, 2011, mentioned this last time, Arts Quest released a press release saying Air Products Town Square is Reden's new destination for free community programming year-round. And they go on in their press release to cite all the wonderful things that are going to happen in the Air Products Town Square. They go on to say how much Air Products has benefited the project. Unfortunately, in my opinion, as a taxpayer, they failed to thank the taxpayers of North Hampton County, city of Bethlehem, and the Bethlehem area school district for sending $6.65 million into the construction of the town square. I think that was an unfortunate omission, because one reading this without having been through the TIF thing would think that, gee, Air Products built the whole thing, that's called naming rights. Third item, let's go down memory lane for a second. June 17, 2008, Darlene Heller submitted a memo to the city council, and in that memo discussing a Preserve America grand request, is the following, "The city's grand request will be for planning and design of the Stock House as a visitor's center at the Bethworks site. The scope of the project will also include some site interpretation, so that the visitor's center will be tied to the interpretation of and access to the site as a whole." Same evening, Councilman Mauer and Councilman Reynolds introduced, and was, and was passed Resolution 2008-109, containing the verbiage, "Be it further resolved that the city of Bethlehem will apply for Preserve America funds to support the planning and interpretation of the Stock House at the prior Bethlehem Steel Site and its physical surrounds as a first step to the preservation and research, reuse of the site as a heritage tourism site for future generations." That was in June 17 of '08. Later in '08, October 21, during courtesy of the floor number two, some guy who lives on Linden Street got up to talk to you, and said, from the minutes, expressing he is glad to see the city got a grant for the Stock House visitor's center at the Bethworks Casino Project site, and has to be convinced that it is a good expenditure of taxpayer funds to buy or lease land that will be partially used to encourage people to leave the city and go to other Lehigh Valley attractions, such the Crayola factory, Wild Water Kingdom, et cetera. That's what landing or visitor's center was meant to do. Now, as things have evolved to the present day, I guess I shouldn't have been so worried, because it's really not landing anymore, I don't think. The TIF project put $2.5 million taxpayer dollars into the building renovations. The plans for that building clearly show that half the building is going to be used by Arts Quest for executive offices. 25% is going to be restrooms, and only 25% is actually going to be used for something called a visitor's center. And I'm anxiously awaiting the final negotiation between the Bethlehem Redevelopment Authority and Arts Quest to see who's going to be responsible for cleaning and maintaining that facility. I have a sneaking feeling the city is going to end up, city taxpayers are going to end up cleaning the office and the restrooms, and that just means Mr. Karp will have to do more with less. As you tour the site on Monday, remember that the school district diverted property taxes via the TIF approximately $15 million for the next 10 years. Therefore, if it was not used this way, they'd have another $1.5 million to plug this year's The TIF's purpose is to encourage taxable development. During his presentation on Founder's Way, Mr. Parks hinted at some taxable development, but as of yet, we're 5% into the remaining 10 years of the TIF, and nothing's public. I'm excluding any sand stuff. So I'm waiting to see if the TIF actually accomplishes what it was supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grub. Yeah, Mr. Roberts.
Dana Grub, 2420 Henderson Place, and a few topics I'd like to discuss tonight. One is crime in Bethlehem, and there's a growing perception in this city that crime is getting out of control, with home invasions, robberies, stabbing recently, home break-ins, gang-related and drug-related activities. Things are beginning to feel a little bit out of hand, whether it's a center-city family threatened by gun-toting masked men, or university students being robbed, no section of Bethlehem seems unscathed by it anymore. When it comes to crime, this is not the city of my younger years, and so much so that the unthinkable idea of owning a firearm, let alone firing one, is no longer unthinkable to me. Regarding EMS center, each time I drive past that proposed location of the new EMS facility, I continue to wonder why ambulances will be forced to squeeze past one another on a substandard 20-foot-wide driveway between the existing tennis courts and city-owned branch home. I'm also hearing more and more concerns expressed about shoehorning this modern new facility into space constricted by an ice skating rink, a home, tennis courts, and a golf course hole. This entire strategy seems to be one born, more of expediency than common sense, and after walking around the site last week one day, I'm firmly convinced of it. I say demolish the house, cite the new facility closer to the road, and shift the tennis courts closer to the ice skating rink if necessary. Show some pride in this accomplishment by not hiding it on top of an existing golf course hole, the number four tee box, and do it right. Nobody tried to hide the pole barn construction of the golf course storage barn from public view. Why do the opposite with a much more relevant facility? I'd like to jump over to casino host fees. In May of 2008, city council favored the mayor's plan for using the casino host fees over that of former councilman Schwader. In his remarks cited in the Express Times article dated May 22, 2008, the mayor said that the Schwader plan would run a $21 million deficit by the end of 2013. After council recently agreed to borrow $17.8 million in a bond, which included $14 million to cover money owed from 2008 and 2009, I'd say the Callahan plan is two-thirds of the way to that suggested deficit of $21 million, and we still have 2010, 2011, 2012, and 2013 to account for. My next topic is entitled, Spending Worse Than Drunken Sailors. When the Director of Community Development recently retired and was named to replace the retired Redevelopment Authority Director, one would presume he'd move right up to the former Redevelopment Authority Director's office. And when the Assistant City Solicitor was named the Director of Community Development, one would think he would move right into the office, recently vacated by the former Director of Community and Economic Development. It all sounds logical and a rather smooth transition. It all sounds logical and a rather smooth transition, but based on a number of recent phone calls and emails I've received, evidently all sorts of staff relocations, utility relocations, and furniture purchases are now underway in that department. Did we hit the lottery? How much staff time is being diverted from real city maintenance needs? How much funding, and where is it from, is going into new furniture purchases? And stay tuned, a similar waste of limited taxpayer-funded resources looms on the horizon in the Public Works Department based on an email I just received the other day. It would seem to me that after three police, two firefighters, one and a half housing inspectors, and dozens more physicians were eliminated, real estate taxes and fees increased.